God damn, this is.
Okay, is everyone in?
I'm in.
And it looks, hi Mel, it looks like everyone else is in, I'm just double checking.
There's a few more that are just showing up, but we're letting them in as they come in.
Okay, perfect, well, let's begin. This meeting of the Livingston City Commission is called the Order, may we have roll call please? Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Present.
Commissioner Friedman?
Present.
Commissioner Maybe?
Present.
Commissioner Newt?
Present.
Now, we have public comment, please be reminded that public comment should be limited over, or two items over which the city commission has supervision, control jurisdiction and advisory power, and also remember that at this time you shouldn't discuss or have public comment related to items that are further on the agenda, further down on the agenda. So you can put your name in the chat, or you can just kind of wait in line and try to maybe raise your hand or start talking, so go ahead, any public comments?
Jonathan Hedinger, 519 West Park Street. I was just wanting to raise the commission's awareness of something. I recently applied for a position on the planning board. I believe that I'm very well suited for the position. I've regularly attended these meetings for the past two and a half years. I've submitted comments on the growth policy each step of the way, and I helped raise awareness for the meetings, which have had substantial public input. I also believe that my participation and knowledge would benefit the growth policy process because I would help ensure seamless transition from an old member to a new one. However, I was told by the city attorney that because I'm not a resident freeholder, I'm not eligible for the position under state law. The term freeholder is an old term, I meant to identify a landowner. Laws requiring land ownership for government participation began as a way to uphold white supremacy in the US, and are from a time when white landowning men were the only ones allowed to serve in public office. This terminology is racist and of a time gone by, and these laws have continually been found to be a violation of the equal protection clause of the US Constitution. This requirement in state law predates the Montana Constitution and hasn't been updated to reflect 21st century values. This requirement is clearly outdated discriminatory and appears to have been deemed unconstitutional by, on multiple occasions, by the Montana Supreme Court and district courts across the state. I wanted to bring this idea to you because Livingston can determine it doesn't want to follow the state law, or it doesn't have to follow the state law. You can decide that we as a community don't believe in this old and discriminatory idea of who should be involved in the city, and choosing to do so is choosing to uphold this discriminatory system that centuries out of date. Choosing to do so means making non-landowners second-class citizens. I thought that raising this idea with the city attorney would be an easy argument, but instead she challenged me to, or she welcomed me to challenge the law in district court or the state legislature, and she said the city will continue to hold, to uphold this discriminatory law. But this city doesn't have to. I talked to people in Bozeman, Great Falls, Hamilton, and Missoula, and they don't require planning board members to be freeholders. I talked to Park County, they also don't require land ownership to serve on the planning board, and I don't think the burden should be on citizens to get the city to do what is right. I don't really have the resources to hire an attorney to challenge this law suggested by the city attorney. However, I have discussed this issue with many public interest attorneys and they agree with me. This law very clearly violates the equal protection clause of the US and Montana constitutions, and I think that the commission should take action to protect its citizens by choosing not to follow this discriminatory statute. I'll follow up with an email with a summary of this position from the Missoula City Attorney and that, but I just wanted to raise your awareness of this issue that I think that the city should choose to not follow this discriminatory law. Thanks, bye.
Thank you, Jonathan. Anyone else, anyone else want public comment time? Double check in, anyone else, public comment? Okay. I appreciate all the interest in this meeting tonight, so I was hoping for more public comment. Thank you, Jonathan, for having at least some public comment. We hope to hear from others throughout the meeting. Let's move on to our consent items. To approve consent items A, B, and C, do I have a motion from the commission, commission to approve items A, B, and C, or any that you would like pulled for consideration?
I'd like to nominate that we pass consent items A, B, and C.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Friedman and a second by Schwartz, roll call please.
Chair Holblin?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Four.
Commissioner Friedman?
Four.
Commissioner Maybe?
Yes.
Commissioner Newt?
Yes.
Motion passes. Tonight we have no proclamations, we do have one scheduled public comment, it's Morgan Scar of Maddox to present the comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal year ending June 20th, 2020. Morgan?
Thank you. If I can share my screen here, thank you. Okay, so I'm Morgan Scar with the Maddox CPA Group presenting the financial audit for June 30th, 2020. There are three audit reports that we issue as a result of this audit, so I'm going to go through those. The first one is our report on the basic financial statements. So there are multiple opinion units because our opinion, I'm just going to admit anybody that comes into the waiting room, I guess, while I'm the host on this. So our opinions cover the entity-wide statements, each major fund, and then the aggregate remaining fund information, so we're not giving an opinion on every single fund.
Hey Morgan?
Yeah.
Can you make it bigger so that public can see?
Sure.
Thank you.
Of course.
Better.
Thank you. So there were no new accounting standards effective for this year that would affect comparability, there have been some of those in previous years. So at the bottom of our page here, you can see our opinion, and it's that these financial statements fairly present the city's financial position, so that's also known as a clean or unmodified opinion. And then the financial statements themselves are the responsibility of management, so our responsibility is to give that opinion on the financials based on our audit procedures. Our second report on this is pretty much all the way in the back here, page numeral four dash one. This is following the financial statements, footnotes, and statistical sections. This is the report on internal control over financial reporting and compliance. Starts out defining an internal control deficiency and goes on to say that we did not identify any deficiencies in internal control that need to be reported here. We did have two compliance findings that get reported, and we'll get to those in a minute. And then this year we do have a third report, just following that one. And this is necessary, you don't have this report every year, it's only necessary in years when the city spends over $750,000 in federal funding. So it's the report on compliance for each major program and on internal control over compliance for what's called uniform guidance purposes, it used to be called a single audit, but it's only required again when you have expenditures of federal awards over $750,000. The report has some similar wording to the previous report about internal controls. This one, though, is specific to the city's compliance with the program requirements for federal funds, whereas the previous report related to internal control over financial reporting in general. So as it relates to federal funds and federal awards, there were no findings identified and reported here related to that compliance. Okay, and then the next screen I was going to share is just the schedule of expenditures of federal awards here, and so because this total is over $750,000, that's why that third report and additional audit requirements were necessary. And you can see obviously that it's due to the coronavirus relief funds administered through the state of Montana, that's why, that's what put you over the 750,000 this year. You've had this type of audit in the past, sometimes you've had USDA funds for wastewater treatment plant expansion over that amount, so it's not, it's not good or bad, it's just an additional requirement when you are in that realm. And then finally, following all of that is the schedule of findings and questions costs, and so this is where we report any findings related to that. Again, the only findings we're reporting here are two compliance findings, both are continued findings from prior year and both relate to MCA, so Montana Code annotated requirements. So 2020 C1, the first one there, MCA says a fund can't budget to spend more than it has in the beginning fund balance plus expected revenues, so that's puts you in what's called a budgeted deficit position. So the sidewalks funds has budgeted deficits for a number of years in a row because the city basically plans to and does those infrastructure projects and then collects the revenue in future years through special assessments, and just the way governmental reporting works, you cannot, you can't book those revenues ahead, so it's going to look like you're in a deficit position and then you continue to collect that revenue. The only real accounting way to offset that would be to, you know, issue debt for them, which, you know, has its own connotations, and so it's, it's a compliance finding per se, but I wouldn't say it's any sort of a deficiency on the city's part. And then the second one, 2020 C2, is similar to the first. The MCA says a fund shouldn't carry, or is not supposed to carry, a cash balance greater than two times the fund's appropriations. So the impact fee fund has more than that in cash because those funds are being accumulated toward a specific future project and then will be spent in coming years. So again, it's a, you know, compliance finding, not a deficiency in internal control. So all of that is, I guess, audit speak to say you have a clean audit, clean audit opinion, no internal control deficiency findings, and a clean audit of federal awards, you only have these two compliance findings, so. All of the financial statements except the footnotes are entirely prepared by Paige, from the entity-wide statements all the way down through the statistical section. And so I guess I would just, you know, want to recognize how much work that is, and thank you to Paige and her finance department and management in general, just for the diligence and overall work that they put into making this a clean and seamless process. Be happy to address questions if you had any, and happily relinquish control of the...
Thank you, Morgan. Thank you very much, you're always great at explaining this very complicated process, so, thank you. Do we have any questions from the commission or any other information from Paige or the city?
I just want to thank Morgan for her work this year, we actually did this all electronically so they didn't have to come to Livingston and come in our office, and she made it super simple for us, and hopefully we got information back to her timely. It was sort of treading, having to do this all electronically and scanning all of those PDFs, but it really wasn't as big of a headache as I was thinking it might be, so thanks, Morgan.
Thanks Paige. Okay, commissioners, anything else? I guess, oh, go ahead, Quentin.
Yeah, I just want to just congratulate the finance department on their continued good work and stuff like that, it's, it's nice to have an audit report like this, and job well done, keep it up, thanks.
And that's what I was going to say as well, thank you for all your hard work, and like I said, keeping it simple for the masses and for us, and as well as, I've noticed in the past couple of years, we've had very few, what, I forgot the word right now, but like dings on our, our document and on our findings, so we appreciate that from the city and from you, Morgan, for catching what we do, do and what we don't, so thank you. All right, we will move on then. Sorry, I'm handling many things over here. And next on our agenda, we have one public comment, I mean, sorry, the public hearing, ordinance number 2095, an ordinance of the city commission of the city of Livingston, Montana, amending chapter 23 of the Livingston Municipal Code entitled Trees by clarifying that all boulevard trees are to be properly maintained, including pruning, watering, and removal when necessary by the homeowner adjacent to the boulevard. This is our second reading, second and final of ordinance 2095, Mr. Carduce.
Thank you, Madam Chair, so as the chair noted, this is the second reading, however, there were a few small changes between the first reading and the second reading at the request of the tree board, and I will let Courtney go through those with you really quick so you can see what was different.
I'm going to direct your attention to page 221, section 23 dash 26, where it says spraying and then applying was added. That was also added in section 2319 to say spraying or application, and that was a request to change, and then it's changed in the same way with different verb tenses on page 222. And that is because not all pesticide or herbicide, particularly Emerald Ash Bor pesticide would be sprayed, it might be injected or drenched, and so we wanted to make sure that the language allowed for the, the application, the proper application of whatever the constituent was to deal with whatever the bug or disease was.
Is that it, Courtney?
That's it.
All right, great, we will open this public hearing to the public. This public hearing is now open on ordinance number 2095, any public comment?
Yeah, I'd like to make some comments.
Go ahead, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, so as a member of the tree board, I wanted to make some personal comments just to say that I, I think that this change to the ordinance makes sense at kind of a basic level, and, and yeah, since the last reading I did talk with Michael, and this comes as the, the tree board is wrapping up our draft of our proposed Emerald Ash Bor plan. So I was really just looking at this, I started looking at this ordinance through that lens, and so, yeah, things like this, you know, whether spray would cover these trunk injections. Yeah, a lot of the comments I'd put together for tonight were directed at this section 2326. I noticed that there, there was some language in there in the previous version that you considered about the city being able to treat the trees for pesticides and bill the homeowners for the cost, and I noticed that that isn't in this draft, which I think is probably a good thing, and, you know, basically I just wanted to talk tonight a little bit about how I see this ordinance related to Emerald Ash Bor, because I think that's, you know, a big concern of a lot of people, and it's a concern as it relates to this ordinance, I think there might be some questions about that. So just to kind of quickly remind us why I think this is a big issue, we know that almost two-thirds of our boulevard trees in Livingston are about 1,500 trees or ash trees, and we know that Emerald Ash Bor is heading our way and that it could get here anytime, and then when it does, the ash trees will have to be treated with insecticide or likely cut down. So in researching the plan, I talked with a local pesticide contractor who, his cost for treating the average size ash tree for the recommended 12 years is something like $1,300, and, you know, that's a lot bigger than the number that I told you back in the summer, which apparently was just the chemical cost, and I think must have been based on the assumption that the city would be treating the trees with existing staff. So the, the cost of having a contract to remove a major or mature ash tree is something like $1,400, and we know that many properties have two, three, four more ash trees in the boulevards, so, you know, this ordinance putting responsibility for boulevard trees on the homeowners, if they're on their own with Emerald Ash Bor, that's something like $2 million that residents could be on the hook for, and, you know, I think individual residents would be facing potentially thousands of dollars to deal with this situation. So in my opinion, I think that's really why I see Emerald Ash Bor as a special case that's kind of outside of any discussion of whether residents want the city to do regular pruning and other upkeep of their boulevard trees, which I think is kind of the, you know, the focus of this ordinance change. So I think it's important to note, you know, there still is a provision in here for the city to remove an ash tree and bill homeowners for the cost, and, you know, that, again, if the city is just, sorry, I'm trying to read my notes and the timer popped up. So yeah, I'll kind of cut to the end here, I guess, you know, I've been talking with other cities that are planning for Emerald Ash Bor, like Sheridan Wyoming is going to a similar ordinance, and they're still planning to have city staff treat a lot of the trees in town at no cost to homeowners, and I think at this juncture in the ordinance, basically what I'm wondering is, you know, can we get some kind of commitment from the city or the commission that they can, you know, play a role in helping people with their ash trees?
Just real quick, because, sorry.
Go ahead, Courtney.
And thank you, Marshall, I appreciate that. Because 2326 does provide for the failure to treat the trees as a nuisance, we could use that to get the homeowners or property owners to pay for that service, and this just gives us some flexibility. Anytime we have an ordinance, we, we're demonstrating an intention, but we can always exercise discretion in enforcement or providing for another avenue for payment down the road, and I think that that's certainly something we could do on an annual basis as we look at budgeting.
Thank you, Courtney. Let me see. I will open it to other public comment first, and we have Leslie, go ahead.
Hi, Darrell, thank you, Chair, Commissioner, I just have a quick question, super easy, so did the residents that have these trees in front of their homes or properties receive a notice? We have so many new residents that are in our community, and I know this started years ago, I've been on these calls for years, and, you know, when it first came up, but now that we have so many new residents, I specifically received a call from one who happened to hear about this meeting and the, the new resolution or the new ruling, and they were not told about it when they purchased the home. So my question again falls back to, were they notified by either the tree commission or the city that they have a boulevard tree that they are now in charge of, and these are the fees that they're looking at for future?
And Michael, can you answer the process of how citizens understand and know the responsibilities of the boulevard trees?
Sure, obviously they haven't been notified yet because this hasn't been passed by the commission and won't be effective for 30 days, so messaging will probably go out in spring or fall flyers along with the, the other public works information when we do those mailers. Obviously, this isn't an instant, an instant transition, so that will happen over the next few months if, if you vote to approve the changes, and then the changes take effect in January.
Right, thank you, Michael. But then we'll have questions, I'm sure there'll be questions from commission, but I want to finish up with other public comments, and anyone who wants to address some of those questions or concerns from the public as well. Do we have any public comment, any other public comment on our ordinance? Okay, let's open it to commission.
Forget to close the public hearing.
I do have, I was just going to say that, this, this public hearing is now closed. Commissioners, any questions or comments on ordinance 2095?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Quentin.
Yeah, I was, I was hoping for something different with the Emerald Ash Bor as well, yeah, I'm surprised at the cost as, as well. Being back in the Midwest here, within the last month, we have personally seen the effect of the Emerald Ash Bor in Illinois and in Michigan, fortunately, they have diversified for us there. And I really think this is something the city should and could take on. And make a, make an exception on this, that we do treat, help the homeowners treat these ash trees. How we go about that exactly, I don't know, Courtney, Courtney did make it sound like that we do have wiggle room there, I guess, but I would like to, like to get, have us commit one way or, one way or the other on helping homeowners that do have ash trees. Thank you, I yield.
Can I piggyback off that? Chair Holblin, I can't hear you.
Sorry, thank you, Quentin, go ahead, Melissa.
Thank you. I agree with Quentin, I, so I don't need to repeat everything he said about the trees, it's going to be expensive and it's going to be tragic when it happens. I'm wondering if, since Marshall's done some research on this, I'm wondering if he has an idea of, are there grants that are available, or is there some sort of support that cities offer residents as opposed to adjusting their billing? I'm just thinking about my own block is lined with ash trees along one side, and some of those corner houses are probably going to have, I don't know, what, six to 10 boulevard trees potentially, and I don't think our neighborhood's unique, so I wonder if Marshall knows, are there like grants available, is he getting at something different than payment plans?
Sure, so are you asking if there are grants that the homeowners can get to treat their trees?
No, more like that cities get to help offset the cost so that homeowners don't have to pay for all the expenses, because I guess I think of trees as a shared resource, especially boulevard trees, but all trees, there's community benefits too, so are there like grants for government so that when this happens in Livingston, it offsets the cost to residents?
Sure, yeah, so in, in talking with like DNRC and other cities, nobody's really talking about grants being available to fund cities for treatment. You know, we just, using the CARES Act money Livingston applied for, and I'm not sure if we've gotten yet, this grant through DNRC to preemptively replace a bunch of ash trees, like potentially 40 or 50 that are in the boulevards. So there's some grant money, I mean, I just, I don't think that anybody's really counting on there being money available to cities for treating ash trees. That may change in Montana, but the plan that we've been drafting on the tree board for Emerald Ash Bor really has a range of proposals, and, you know, I think when you, when you do the math, what you find is that... And, you know, I think when you when you do the math, what you find is that I think it's going to be considerably cheaper for the city to have an employee treat trees than to have a contractor do it. And so that, you know, I think that will be in the proposal we'll be putting to you in our in our draft plan, you know, along with a lot of other things like I talked with people in Lewistown, where they have a very similar ordinance and a similar tree budget, and they have a a program for removal of dead trees or diseased trees where the homeowner makes like a $200 copayment. And then the city covers some of the additional cost and has city staff help to dispose of the woods. So that's like $200 versus, you know, $1,400 or more. So I just, I think there are going to be a range of things that we want the city to be considering that can help reduce those costs. You know, I'm not sure if, yeah, I'll leave it there.
Thank you. That's help. That's helpful. I'm in favor with Quentin that I believe it would be good to bring this back up on a future agenda or, you know, get more information and figure out how we're gonna solve this. And I certainly don't want anything in this current ordinance to inhibit that process. I yield.
Thank you. So it brings me to, I mean, within this ordinance, is there, and I maybe I need advice on this, but is there any language change that can can work towards a solution that includes a Emerald, you know, Ash Bore mitigation or or treatment, whatever, so that we don't have the public having to take on that that cost? Is there anything, Courtney, that we can do within the ordinance itself?
I don't see that a language change would be helpful. I think this is all in the way that we apply the rules and try to deal with what we know is potentially a fairly significant problem and that those need to be recommendations that are made with the advice of the tree board on a year-to-year basis, because this is going to change a little bit. And the tree board has a lot of strategies in their pocket to address some of this. Some of that is replacing the trees. Some of that is treating issues as they come up. One of the, I guess, benefits, for lack of a better word, in this case, is weather. So if we get really cold weather, like we did two years ago, that can mitigate the larva of the Emerald Ash Bore. And we'll plan for the the absolute best result and also what the worst outcome could be if they were left untreated. But the plans that the tree board are working on are very flexible and forward-thinking. And they can provide us with recommendations about where they see the need from year to year. And we do have an arborist now, and I believe that he has a pesticide applicator's license. If I'm wrong about that, maybe Shannon can correct me. But in the past, when I've had to apply pesticide, the the drench that is used for this is is not terribly expensive individually. But if we're doing it for thousands or tens of thousands of trees, it could in fact get very expensive. And I will let, you know, I will defer to Marshall on that. And I think that they have a super good group and that they're going to give us in from great information to make decisions on.
All right. Thank you, Courtney. Quentin, can I ask you a question? So what do you see a possible solution to this concern or this issue? Because I think it is, it does worry me that we're putting a big, potentially just the document itself states, it state so clearly enough that they that we can have the boulevard or the owner of the property in front of the boulevard responsible for a huge cost coming up potentially in the, you know, in tens of, tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands.
Right. Yeah. I'm just thinking of the the church I I go to myself. I believe we have at least, I think we have 10 ash trees on the boulevards. And that's going to add up real quick. I just want us to be able to be maybe treat the Emerald Dash Bore as a separate issue aside from, you know, what we have here and and look at it as a a unique problem, because it is a unique problem. And it's going to take some unique solutions to to react to this. And seeing as how we do have arborists and stuff like that, we hold down costs, you know, by doing it ourselves throughout the city and within the city. Because like Marshall said, I I can't remember what the dosage was, the price for the chemicals. It wasn't, it's not that much, but it's the application. It sounds like that's getting expensive. So, yeah, however we treat, I I'd like to see this treated as a separate issue. I I I don't see where we need to have something in the ordinance on this, but I'd like to treat this on its own and and deal with it that way. I think that's the best way to do it and come up the solution, you know, even if the homeowners have to have a co-pay or something like Marshall mentioned. There's a lot, it seems like he's done a lot of research and stuff like that, and there's more to do on it. But but it is coming. And and I've seen what it does. And we do not have diverse forests here. And as Marshall said, when an ash tree dies, it needs to be replaced with something other than a green ash. So we do have diversity. So that's my thoughts on it. Thank you.
Thanks, Quentin. I put your feet to the fire and thank you for answering. Okay, other commissioners, any other comments?
At this point, especially with the the economy, the way it is, I don't think it it would be really economically fair to totally hold the property owner responsible for the total cost of however the 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 tree situation is handled. And I only have one in front of my house, so this is not a a personal issue. I think that there's got to be some kind of a way, the same thing is where people can receive aid with their with their energy costs, some type of plan where someone maybe with a qualification is based on the energy mitigation to not have to handle the entire cost of of the tree situation. Otherwise, I can see where it would be absolutely devastating for somebody who has more trees and money, so to speak. And they would be in very, very big financial trouble. Thank you.
Thanks, Warren. Okay, anyone else? I think on one of the statements made, I guess, when it comes to boulevard tree responsibility, I feel that one of, I knew from the beginning of buying our first house here in 2003 that it was our responsibility, that boulevard maintenance or tree maintenance was our responsibility. And I'm not sure if other, you know, I I'm sure in other communities that responsibility is shared and or part of a parks district or something. So it could be confusing to new landowners or homeowners. So I I'm not sure how we communicate that. And I know Leslie had brought that up and that if if we communicate that or if that's just something that it's our responsibility to find out. But I just wanted to acknowledge her question and her thoughts on that. So moving on to the ordinance. So this is the second reading, and I unless there's other comments, do we have a motion from the commission?
Make a motion to approve ordinance 202095.
Second.
We have a motion by Short and a second by Friedman. Roll call, please.
Chair Holgland?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Four.
Commissioner Friedman?
Four.
Commissioner Mayby?
Yes.
Commissioner Newt?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next on our agenda, we have ordinance number 2098. And ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, amending ordinance number 2041, 2049, and 2055 as codified by Chapter 9 of the Livingston Municipal Code in Traffic and Vehicles. Mr. Curtis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is a parking ordinance that deals with the last block of Main. I'm going to bring that up on the shared screen. I'm going to let Shannon walk you through it if he's on there and give you just some background on what it's going to do.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I was contacted by Teresa at Little Einstein's here about a month and a half ago. And she was concerned about the lack of parking available to drop students off at their facility. It's my understanding there's about 50 children that attend Little Einstein's. And the way our current city code is written, it, there is unrestricted parking on that west side of Main Street from basically, well, Clark Street, there's down to Geyser Street. So I reached out to Jim Woodhall, the city planner, Courtney Dale, police chief, Ken, fire chief. And we looked at the current code and came up with a plan that provides a loading zone in front of Little Einstein's and cleans up the two-hour versus unrestricted parking on that side of the street. And Courtney has so graciously written that and included that in the packet. And that is the the changes are what is up for approval for you tonight. And I'd be happy to answer any detailed questions concerning what we're doing there. But basically, from the south property line of Wilcoxen's Ice Cream to Geyser Street, that will be unrestricted parking with the exception of the loading zone in front of Einstein's, a Little Einstein's preschool.
So Shannon, can you clarify to all, when you say unrestricted parking means there's no two-hour limit? There's no any limit except in the requested 15-minute zone or what do you, can you just clarify what?
Exactly. There it is, it is. It, so from the south property line of Wilcoxen's property to Geyser Street on the west side, it will be a non-two-hour parking zone or unrestricted. The way the, I think the code revision in the packet, we do need to remove lots 15 and 16, which would be the last parking spot right before the hand or the crosswalk at Geyser Street. And so it it wouldn't make sense to to have that stretch of the street be unrestricted. And then the very last spot before you get to Geyser be under the two-hour restriction. So I think we recommend that 15 and 16 be removed from the way the code revision is is presented in the packet.
Okay. And then another quick question. So the other side of the street is unrestricted as well?
It is in front of the Sherwood. As you recall, we we provided a an ordinance change in front of the physical therapy during the project last year where we were able to eliminate some off-street parking in a rather obscure approach into that. So there is some limited parking during business hours in front of there. But from that point up to Clark Street, it is there, there is some two-hour restriction parking lots or parking spots there, excuse me.
Like in front of Loaves and Fishes to the corner?
Yes. Exactly.
Thank you for that information. I I will open it to public comment or unless there is a clarifying question, a commissioner wants to ask first. Okay, any public comment on our ordinance number 2098?
Darrell, I had a clarifying question.
Oh, go ahead, Melissa.
I'm just trying to under match the lot numbers because my brain doesn't work in lot numbers with what somebody drew on the map. So when you're talking loading zones, sometimes there's loading zones that are loading just for particular hours. And then outside of those hours, it's parking, at least in places that I've been to, when there's downtown areas that have loading zones. Are we talking no more parking there and only loading zones? Or are we talking certain hours of loading zones and other hours parking? So like, does this mean nobody can park there on the weekends or at nights? Or during the time that people aren't loading? Yeah.
That's an excellent question, Commissioner Newt. And when we spoke with Teresa at Little Einstein's, they have, they start receiving or they're open at 7:00 and then by 6:00 PM, the the students have left. So it would be a loading zone restriction during those hours of 7:00 to 6:00 PM.
And then outside of that, folks that live in the neighborhood can park there at night?
Yes. And just to add to your observation of that, there is one private residence that's just south of of the Wilcoxen's property. And that is the purpose of of the delineation from the Wilcoxen's property to the north of being a two-hour restriction. And everything south of that, as you get more into a residential setting, being unrestricted parking.
Oh, sorry. I think I hit it by accident. Melissa, was that it?
Yeah, I was just going to say thank you. That was my clarifying question.
Thank you. And I guess one piggyback question off of that. So I'm assuming 7:00 to 6:00 Monday through Friday.
Yes, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you, Shannon. Okay, we'll open it to public comment. Any public comment on ordinance 2098? Okay, we will move it to commissioner comments. Just also be reminded, this is the first reading, and we will have a second public hearing on this. Any other commissioner comments or questions?
Just as a comment, the it seems to make perfect sense to to do that, to make a loading zone, I mean. Thank you.
Thanks, Warren. Okay, if there's no.
I'll say something. I I'm always wanting us to be cautious about parking near downtown. And I will say, going to school during those hours. And I will say going to school during those hours where kids are loading, I think it's a safety issue. I think they need a loading zone because I think it's a safety issue with the amount of traffic that the street gets. When all the parents are driving their kids to school or the buses are going to school and people are trying to load their kids into the preschool and there are very little people around a lot of traffic. So I think it makes sense to, from a safety perspective.
Yep.
Agreed. Thank you, Melissa. All right. And I, one just statement as well, I appreciate the community coming with a request about safety and, and we found a balance between the needs of the residential, needs of a small business and the needs of an apartment complex across the street and put it all together. I think it was well done. It's not always easy and yet we could make it work for this one small block. So well done, everyone. All right. And well, I guess we'll move to a motion.
I'll make a motion. We approve ordinance twenty ninety eight.
Second.
We have a motion by Newt and a second by Friedman. Roll call, please.
Sir Hoagland?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Four.
Commissioner Friedman?
Four.
Commissioner Mayby?
Four.
Commissioner Newt?
Four.
Motion passes. Next on our agenda, we have three resolutions. And our first resolution is a, is resolution number forty nine thirty-two, a resolution of intent of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, resolving its intent to amend the boundaries of the Livingston Business Improvement District and to extend the boundaries of the Livingston Business Improvement District and to extend the duration of the district for ten years at the request of the L B I D for its members as required by law. Mr. Cardes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is a combined resolution, as you mentioned, for both changing the boundaries and for extending the Business Improvement District for another ten years. This is a resolution of intent. So really, all it's saying is that you plan to have a public hearing on this. And I believe we will notify, we will notice it after this meeting and it will occur in, should be the first meeting in January, but it might be the second meeting depending on notification requirements. So we'll get you that information once it's done. The resolution itself that you'll vote on in the, in the public hearing would add a few more businesses to the Business Improvement District as well as renew it for the ten years. I don't think there's any elimination of current Business Improvement District properties. So anybody that's currently in it will remain in it with the additions of some parcels that are outlined in the, in the packet. Outside of that, that is all I have. Please feel free to ask any questions.
All right. Thank you, Michael. And so we'll have one public hearing. I want to make sure we're clear to everyone else. So this is a resolution of intent to hold a public hearing. And then from there, it go, if it goes to the public hearing, we have one public hearing for decision. So this is the first reading. We have a second and that's a public hearing, just in a nutshell. So let's open it to public comment. Any public comment on resolution forty nine thirty-two?
Hi, Madam Chair. This is Kristin Galbraith. I'm the Secretary of L B I D. And I was just going to take a little time to review the resolution and kind of make some points on some emails that might have gone out to everyone in town as well as some other things that aren't really factual. So I, the resolution has nothing to do with bylaw amendments or restructuring of the L B I D. It's presented tonight relating to adding or subtracting properties that are within the existing geographical boundaries under which the L B I D was originally created. It's also to extend the duration of the district for ten years. The properties that we're hoping to add are again, within the same geographical boundaries that were set up ten years ago. And those include seven properties that were either left out during the original L B I D creation, which include three whiting condo units that are leased for retail restaurants, real estate, the Junkies Antique Building on Main Street, the Thomas Blue Rock Property on Main Street next to Vision West, and the new Neptune's Restaurant, which used to be a, I think it was an apartment complex or a mental health organization. And then we have one property that was residential and is now commercial, and that's the Laird Property on Third Street. Additionally, the condos above the Murray would be added. That's twenty-four units comprised of fourteen owners. So the reason for adding these properties is they're currently benefiting from L B I D programs and projects without paying into L B I D. So it's appropriate that they be added as taxpaying properties since their property is within the geographical boundaries. Some of the things that you guys might notice around town that we do are the flower baskets, the garbage removal, graffiti remediation, banners, the new snowflakes. There is one new property or one older property in the district that actually we would like to remove, and that's at two fifteen West Lewis. They are, they were a commercial property when Mustang Catering was there and now it's residential. Just as a point of fact, there is no gerrymandering of the borders to exclude properties who might not agree with city staff. The legal deadline to renew is in March as the L B I D was created by resolution on March first, two thousand and eleven for a period of ten years. And according to some notes and emails that have gone out, there is no breach of any contract with the city as there is no contract with the city. And if you guys have questions, just let me know. But that's kind of where we're at right now.
Thank you, Kristin. Do we have any questions?
I'd like to make a comment if I may. May I make a comment?
Yeah, I was just asking if any of the Commissioners had a question on anything. And then, yes, Patricia, you're up next then. Okay, no questions. So go ahead, Patricia. Patricia, you're muted.
I have been a member of L B I D for ten years and paid taxes into it for ten years. In addition, I was, I helped write the bylaws and I helped advocate for L B I D when it first began. So my interest, and I have been president of downtown building owners for the last thirteen years. So I, more often than not, I went to L B I D meetings. Jack Luther also went as the downtown building owners as a cooperative effort. So I want to be sure that, that, and I'm very familiar with the law because I first became involved with L B I D with the buildings L B I D twenty years ago. Okay, I would like to see the petition that has sixty percent of the owners in the area to be included in the, in the district for you to bring this up tonight. You cannot bring this up unless, according to the law, unless there is a petition in which sixty percent of us who own property, and I own a significant piece of property in this district, have, have signed this petition. And I don't see it anywhere. I've requested over the city attorney. She has not produced it. It is illegal for you to bring this up tonight without that petition. So I, I don't see why it's coming up now. And also, we have the right to protest, but we're, you are giving us such little time. But most of all, I just don't know where that petition is. And by the way, the last time the L B I D bylaws were amended, none of us were given any kind of notice at all. And, and that is just a blatant violation of the law as far as, and I've studied this law in, in detail. So I'm very concerned about what is coming before this commission tonight, and I don't think you should act. I think you better be better prepared than you are right now because we're talking about redoing for the next ten years. And they require sixty percent of the downtown building owners. And that's not anywhere apparent. As I said, I've requested this petition from the city attorney and she has, she has nothing. L B I D hasn't produced this. Can you answer this? Can you let me know what, why they're violating the law the way they are?
All right. Thank you, Patricia. Are you done?
Well, I'm wondering, I'd like to see an answer. If you look at Montana code, I'd like to see an answer to my question.
In a moment, if you wouldn't mind, let's get all the public comment. And then Courtney, could you, at one point, talk about the, the step process of how we got to the boundaries, et cetera, and that sixty percent question that was brought up, please? Okay. Well, I want to make sure, let's wait, let's give public comment. And then if we could address that in between public comment and just answering those questions or any questions that come up that need to be, that the Commissioners request answered.
Okay, just preliminarily, I had an email from Patricia today and also a phone call. I called her back this afternoon and she didn't want to speak to me. So I didn't have an opportunity to explain what we were doing to her prior to the meeting, although I did try. Secondarily, we don't generally respond to comments, but I would be more than pleased to respond to questions from the commission.
Yes. And what I'd like is.
Respond just briefly.
If you.
Strongly in public government.
Courtney.
I believe that if.
Patricia, I'm talking. Um, so Courtney, if you wouldn't mind, after we finish public comment, if you would then talk about the process. I know Kristin touched on it a little bit. I've read, we, I think all the Commissioners have read up on it to a certain extent as to, to understand the concept of the L B I D so we can, and how it got to this place is what we need from Michael and you, if possible. And then to answer, and I think within that, it can be the sixty, what that reference is sixty percent, because I know ten years ago, that was part of the planning or the intent and the requirement, but I want to understand it all together now, ten years later, and how that's different. But please, let's keep it open to all public comment and go ahead. Any other public comment on our resolution? Forty-nine thirty-three, sorry. Oh, wait, wrong one. Forty-nine thirty-two.
Hello, this is Katie Weaver. I live at four one four West Front Street, representing Park County Extension. I just want to speak in support of this tonight. In my role as Economic and Community Development in Livingston and Park County, I've worked with the L B I D over the years and I have seen them demonstrate important and much-needed leadership. I'm promoting tourism, marketing, and business support and really over the last year, seeing them emerge through their work to bring the small business revolution and through navigating COVID nineteen, just a much-needed and important voice and organizer and supporter of our local business community. And just want to offer up my words of support for extending the district another ten years. Thank you.
Thanks, Katie. Any other public comment? Doesn't look like there's any other public comments. So Commissioners, could, would you please ask any questions or clarifying questions and comments at this time? As well as Court, I guess, would you just help us first with that background information on the L B I D process? Or Michael, and then, and that question about the sixty percent?
Thank you, Chair Hoagland. I would be very pleased to do so. So this is one of those instances of there's more than one way to skin a cat. And as you know, from the creation of other special improvement districts, rural fire districts, improvement districts, taxing districts, there are different ways to create those. Under one section of the law, which is seven dash twelve dash eleven eleven, we are required as a governing body to act on a petition from sixty percent of the property owners to create a business improvement district. When sixty percent of the business owners in a particular area bring us a, a petition that we can verify has enough signatures on it, we have to vet and then create a business improvement district at their request. There is, however, an alternative to creating a business improvement district. And that is how the governing body can create a, a business improvement district, and that's under seven dash twelve dash eleven twelve. And that is where we do a resolution of intent. And then we send out a notice to every property owner who's affected, which is something that Kristin is doing tomorrow, giving them notice of the public hearing. And if there were more than fifty percent of the property owners that protest, then we cannot extend or amend the boundaries of the Business Improvement District. But it's a separate process that allows the governing body to go forward with that versus a petition from the property owners. Now, certainly, the petition from the property owners was the way that this happened ten years ago. But it's not required that they use the same process or that we are not allowed to use the process under seven dash twelve dash eleven twelve. So this process is in its resolution of intent phase. And the resolution of intent and the notice will go out to all of those property owners so that they have the opportunity to participate. And they are actually getting specific notice where perhaps with sixty percent on the other side of this, when it first occurred, only a public notice was required. So the participation and the, and the information that's going out, I think, is at least as good, if not better. And particularly maybe in the time of COVID, when we're giving people individual notice of what's happening and giving them the opportunity to show up in this forum and discuss their concerns with us. I think it might be the best process that we could employ in acting on the L B I D's request to extend and amend their boundaries. Do you have any questions? Did I, did I miss anything?
No, that helped me understand the, the history and then as well as, could you just clarify on, now that, that was ten years ago. What's the difference between the process ten years ago and what we're doing now? Other than you're, you're adding properties, we're putting that out to the property owners through the L B I D. They can reject or whatever if they choose. And then what is the process, though, to move forward with? I guess I, now I'm sort of losing my thought, but what is the, the process for the business owners to move this forward or not? Or to stop, you know, if they have concerns?
So if we don't receive protest from more than fifty percent of the existing L B I D members, then it is extended for ten years. If we don't receive protests from more than fifty percent of the. protests from more than 50% of the additions or amendments to the contour of that, which, as Kristen explained, basically just takes in that part of Park Street that includes the Murray and the condos and whiting's and is laid out in the map that's present present in your packet, then the boundaries will be amended and the term will be extended and it will continue to operate as an independent agency governed by its own board.
Okay, great. Thank you. That was very helpful information. Commissioners, any other questions, comments?
Chair Hoagland, I'd just like to say that my wife Jill was a part of the initial years of the BID. And I was just there as an observer. The BID has accomplished a tremendous number of not so obvious things like the hand sanitizers now that are outside the businesses. And to me, a major accomplishment was the removal of graffiti. Because when I first got here, it wasn't really bad. But it seemed to be gradually increasing. And that program has pretty much nipped that in the bud. And to me, there's nothing worse than driving through a small town. Well, there is worse, but and seeing scribbling all over the buildings. It's an indicator, whether it's accurate or not, and it usually is of what's happening in that town. So I think that was a major accomplishment that is really kind of not noticed or under the wire. So it's been a very, very effective organization for for quite a number of programs and very well run. Thank you.
Thanks, Warren. Other commissioners? Melissa?
Yeah, I just I wanted to comment on Kristen's list of things that we would recognize in Elbit's work and I they do great things. And I think a lot of us recognize those things as being part of the character of our town and what makes our downtown so inviting. The other thing I want to comment on that we haven't is I feel like this discussion of maps and hearing Kristen's descriptions of what they want to propose to add to the borders is a good indicator that our downtown is healthy. And that makes me feel really excited to hear that we have more businesses and more residential spaces than maybe what was downtown 10 years ago. So that makes me, that's like the underlying thing that nobody said yet, but I think it's an exciting thing for Livingston. So I appreciate those those bits of facts. Kristen, thank you.
Thanks, Melissa. I'll piggyback off of that as well. I appreciate that information, first of all, Kristen and Patricia for expressing your concern and that what I like about this whole process is this will go back to the people in the district, the owners in the district, and they will help make this decision. It seems from what all the information I've read on it, multiple comments made to us or to me as a commissioner about this issue that we're going through this as a process and I think it's going well and I look forward to having it in the public hearing. Any other commissioner comments? Okay, do then we'll move on to a motion. Do I have a motion from the commission on resolution number forty nine thirty two?
I make a motion to approve resolution forty nine thirty two.
Second.
We have a motion by Schwartz and a second by Friedman. Roll call, please.
Chair Hoagland?
Yes?
Commissioner Schwartz?
Four.
Commissioner Freeman?
Four.
Commissioner Maybe?
Four.
Commissioner News?
Four.
Motion passes. Next on our agenda is resolution number forty nine thirty three, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana of its intent to amend the budget for fiscal year twenty 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 one and by making appropriations adjustments in the amount of one million two hundred and seventy five thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars and revenue adjustments in the amount of one million six hundred and sixty three dollars or one million six hundred and sixty three five hundred and seventy four dollars. Go ahead, Michael. Sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm gonna let Paige talk through the specifics of it, but just from a philosophical standpoint, we used to hold all these until the end of the year and you did one large budget amendment. We're going to try to get them to you more frequently. We might shoot per quarterly or semi annually, but the idea is to let you see some of the the process, the budget process that happens during the year instead of just saving it up for the end of the year. So with that, I'll turn over to Paige and she can give you the specifics on this particular amendment.
Thanks, Mike. So Commissioner Faith, if you want to go to page two forty in the budget, we could just talk about the specifics in this. We can start with the revenue. And let's start with the Big Sky Economic Development Grant because I think that's easiest. You guys approved this grant earlier in the year. It was accepted by the city on behalf of the main hotel. The Department of Commerce just needs to see that that spending this money was actually included in the FY21 budget, which it was not. We didn't have the information that we needed at the time, so it was not approved in the budget. So you can see there's an offsetting expenditure at the very end of the list of appropriation adjustments that's just allowing that money to be reimbursed back to the people that are developing the main hotel. The rest of the items on this budget are actually related to the CARES Act funding. So the revenue that we anticipate to collect is that 1.6 million in revenue. Below are the expenditures that are actually associated with that, that the commission approved to be spent in previous commission meetings. So this amendment is just allowing us to actually adjust the budget for those expenditures that were previously approved.
All right. Thank you, Faith.
Paige.
I mean Paige, sorry.
Yeah, I know who you guys are.
All right, let's open it to public comment on resolution number forty three or forty nine thirty three. Any public comment?
Jonathan Henniger, five nineteen West Park Street. I just wanted to raise one concern on it. It says that the new city building was one million sixty thousand dollars in adjustment. And I believe that the commission only approved the purchase of the building. It didn't improve. I don't think that the commission approved the the upgrades that would make it that total. So I think that should be a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars less. It should be nine hundred and forty five thousand. But just wanted to point that out. Thanks.
Thank you, Jonathan. Think it's a good question in a minute. If you wouldn't mind answering that, that'd be great. Any other public comment? No other public comment. We will have commissioner comments. So would I think that was a interesting question Jonathan had would Michael or I guess it would probably be Michael. Could you answer that on the the number being different from the building purchased?
Sure. So that was, he's correct in that it includes the additional requirements for the building once purchased. That was a question I sent up to the commission and received an answer that the the intention was that the purchase price and the requirements to make it usable were all one vote. So that was clarified to me as that was all approved.
Thank you, Michael. Any other commissioner comments, questions?
I have a question about that. I I don't remember that, but I was the dissenting vote on that, so maybe I wasn't asked. Also, I'm just looking at the this was what we got when we toured the building and there was some CARES Act list that was in it. The upgrading the building was listed at 50,000. And the furnishing was at 60,000. And a solar array was at 80,000. So none of those match 115. And I can you guys clarify, like, was I just? Did I miss an email or was it just not sent to me if I was in the minority? I don't remember that. I don't remember that conversation.
Do Melissa, do you want me or would you like Mike?
I don't know who has the information since I don't have the information or the information I have is apparently outdated. So whoever can answer it, I guess, Jerryl would be good. Thank you.
Well, and I think one of my questions that relates to that, so I know with the approval of the building and that we knew that part of purchasing the building is there was going to need to be some improvements and we discussed that during the meeting. That but we did not, I don't recall in Michael actually approving it within the budget process or and if we, I I wonder if we need to or move that in and to another agenda to talk about those improvements and budgeting for those improvements, including the I mean, really, the requirements. So I'm a little confused too as to knowing that we approved the building, but with the the caveat in the future of knowing we need some improvements for it to function. But I don't recall actually approving that those numbers. So, Michael, what do you? How do we? How do you reckon?
It's really up to you. If you want the the numbers that the way that adds up, it's the 950,000 that were approved for the building and then the 50,000 and the 60,000 together, that equals your million sixty. That's where you get that. So that's how that that number comes out to be.
But the building sold for nine forty five. Is that right? That's where my mouth was off. Okay, thank you. So you're just rolling in the the difference was just rolled into the improvements, the extra 5,000?
Yes. So it was just what was approved is what we put in there. If we don't spend that that entire amount, then that would go back into the pot.
So do we need to, I mean, I think we should go through the process of funding or budgeting for those improvements and going through that those steps? Can we amend this resolution to reflect that and then bring it back to us at a future date as far as the improvement, the needed improvements and having a conversation, a public meeting on that?
You can do whatever you want. It's absolutely can be this this particular resolution could come back or we can you can approve this resolution and use that as the authority approval for the improvements or you can subtract that amount from this from that particular align item, approve the budget amendment for those items and then include any additional in future budget amendments. So there's a there's a myriad of ways you can go about it. It just depends on how you would like to do it.
Chair Hoagland?
Yep, Melissa, go ahead.
So I don't have a sense of all the commissioners. If I'm the only one that was out of the loop on this or not, so I would like it to be in a meeting so we could be on the same page, since this is an amount that requires a commission vote. Over 50,000 requires, I think, when we're outside of this, when we're in the emergency, I think the resolution allows the city manager to spend, I think it was up to 50,000 without commission approval, and then it would have to be approved at a later date. But since we're over the amount and I'm still unclear what the update was that I didn't get. So I would like it to be at a meeting so we could all be at the same page.
Okay, thank you, Melissa. I think what I'm putting together and I I I'm with you. I would like to see this the funding for those improvements and that conversation and discussion to be on a future agenda. But I do know from the tour, from the public meeting with the CARES Act funding, we talked about the need for those improvements to make this building functional. So I so I do remember parts and pieces of what what we're talking about in that need. But I think what I agree with the most with on this, Melissa, is that we need to discuss this as a separate item, those that potential, those potential improvements. And so I mean, I haven't heard anything from other commissioners out, but I have a proposal and I can wait, but I would like to hear from others.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Quentin.
Yeah, I can't specifically remember how and if we approved, you know, the improvements, the building's worthless unless we do the improvements to us. So it's not useful, but to make it cleaner and a little more transparent, I have no problem you know, going through the process of reallocating those, looking at those funds again for improvements and furnishings. If that's what you guys so desire. That's all I have on it. Thank you. I yield.
Anyone else?
I agree with Quentin on his question. I think that's the way we should handle it.
Thank you, Mel.
You know, breaking that out separately. I guess it would be more transparent. It would be more transparent and shouldn't be a problem. Thank you.
Thanks, Warren. So what I'm, I'd like to propose, I guess, is that and Michael, thank you for stating like the the options, which we love, helps us to to you know, state some pretty complicated things. But I think we should amend this resolution to reflect that hundred and ten thousand dollars or reduced the appropriations part of it by a hundred and ten thousand dollars and then consider it on another agenda. Which I think was your third option, Michael, from the little list you made. Any thoughts on that commissioners? Or I guess, is that a motion? I don't know. I feel like I'm
That sounds good.
I that it's more of a conversation.
I yeah, yeah. If you're ready to entertain a motion, I'll put that forward. I will amend it.
One second. So we have a motion from Quentin on resolution forty nine thirty three with the amended numbers, number reduced by a hundred and ten thousand dollars. And a second by Melissa. Roll call, please. Sorry.
Chair Hoagland?
Yes?
Commissioner Schwartz?
Four.
Commissioner Freeman?
Four.
Commissioner Maybe?
Yes.
Commissioner News?
Yes.
Motion passes. Last resolution tonight is resolution number forty nine thirty four, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, authorizing the city manager to sign a professional services agreement with Thomas Dean and Hoskins Incorporated, Incorporated TDNH Engineering for Design Services for the Fifth Street Sewer Capacity Project and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement to include the use of contingency funds as deemed necessary, Mr. Cardus and or Shannon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Did you want to take your five minute break before we continue?
Oh. Just fine. Yes. We will take a five minute break and return at seven ten.
Okay.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Michael.
Engineering contract with TDNH to start designing some of the improvements to the Fifth Street Crossing. I will share my screen to show you where that is and then Shannon can explain the details to you.
Okay.
Are you still there, Shannon? I saw him just a second and then he disappeared.
I'm here, Mike. Thank you. All right, would you like me to take it from here?
Please do.
All right. Hello again, Madam Chair. This before you tonight is a professional services agreement for TDNH due design of a, a 550 foot stretch of sewer main. This is. Looked at as phase two of the project we did last summer where we upsize the sewer main from an eight inch. A main to a 15 inch main from Washington School or Eighth Street to Fifth Street. So this project will basically pick up where last year's project left off and we're looking at. Upsizing the line from the current eight inch size to the largest we can feasibly put in. The casing that goes underneath the railroad track, so. The, the stretch that we're talking about would be starting right in the middle of Fifth Street in the alley between Front and Chinook. And then connecting to the main that runs parallel with Park Street just south of the tracks. Our crew is scheduled tomorrow to pothole. There's, there's 135 foot casing. That is underneath the railroad tracks and we've received. Approval from MRL to dig that up and survey it to verify the size of the casing. And the grade on the casing, so we can determine how large of a main we can, sewer main we can install in that casing underneath the tracks. It's a pretty straightforward project if, if, if the, the casing is indeed a 24 inch. We could, in, in reality, put a 21 inch main in that casing. TDNH will do some calculations that are similar to what they did in the sewer collection PER. And. Basically look at future residential connections on the north side of the tracks that this line would be. Collecting wastewater for, so. At this point, we're just waiting on approval. From the commission on the engineering contract. At this point, we're looking at having the survey, design and plans ready for bid by mid February, which. Is a good time for bidding construction projects and. At that time, we will, we will probably bring a contract back in front of the commission for the construction phase and construction management phase. And we're looking at utilizing impact fees to pay for this project since it is a capacity expanding project. So I'd be open to any other questions you might have at this time.
Thank you very much, Shannon. Any commissioner clarifying questions before we open it to public?
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead, Melissa.
First, I want to say Shannon, I appreciate all the. Presentations and all the work you guys have been doing on the north side. Everything has gone. At least from my vantage point of, of a resident over there, it's gone just as you described it would. With the projects this last year and I'm going to ask you the question that you can probably already anticipate. How will this affect traffic? On Fifth Street?
Well, it's certainly going to have some impact to traffic. Fortunately. We have many options for detouring around. The work zone per se, but. With, with the quality of contractors that we have had do our downtown projects and their specialties being in rehabilitation. In all reality, it, it could take less than a week to do the stretch in Fifth Street from the alley to where we. Enter into the. Area in the MRL, MRL rail yard that's grass just south of Front Street. So I would, I would say that the traffic impacts are going to be very minimal.
That's music to my ears. Thank you.
Thanks, Melissa. I will open it up to public comment. We have a need public comment. On resolution 4934. Any public comment? Okay, we'll close public comment and open it up to commissioners. Any questions or comments, commissioners?
Yeah, full speed ahead.
Thanks, Quentin. We have been discussing this project for some time. Realizing the need is great and with some increased buildings on, building on the west or north side. We know that. It, it's probably ahead of its time a little bit, which I appreciate. We're not getting too. Far into having. Infill, more infill and building. And then compensating or suddenly scrambling to fix a problem that we know has been a problem, so I appreciate it. And we have talked about it for some time, so I'm glad we're moving forward. Any other commissioner comments? Okay, do we have a motion from the commission on resolution 4933?
I make a motion, we pass resolutions 4934.
Oh, 34, sorry.
Second.
We have a motion by Friedman and second by Maybe. Roll call please.
Chair Holland?
Yes.
Christian Schwartz?
Or.
Christian Friedman?
Or.
Christian Maybe?
Or.
Christian News?
Or.
Motion passes. Okay, next we're moving on to our action items tonight. Our first action item is to discuss approved deny appointing member to serve on the city county health board. Mr. Cardus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the. This appointment has come up because of a resignation of our. Former city health board member, Mike Eman resigned, so this appointment will be to fill out the remainder of his term, which I think is for another year. The applications before you tonight, I think, present you with the best kind of problem. These are probably the two most qualified candidates I've seen for any board. Ever, not just Livingston, to Livingston. It's, it's an amazing group, both of them that have applied. I appreciate the fact that they're willing to do it with their already busy schedules. That being said, I do have to make a recommendation for you, which is not easy to do. The two applicants were Dr. Scott Coleman, who currently works out at Livingston Healthcare and Dr. Stephanie Lang, who is from Community Health Partners. So two, I think, well-respected and well-known physicians in the community, both more than, than qualified enough to sit on the health board. I, I think there's advantages to, to both of them. They both are definitely plugged into the community in different ways. They both have a wonderful personality and demeanor for this job. My recommendation tonight will be Dr. Scott Coleman, only because I think the. The tie-in to Livingston Healthcare is really important and something that is a huge benefit on his side. While Community Health Partners is also very important. He, Livingston Healthcare is a primary medical provider for the community and I think having that immediate tie-in to. To their system would be a benefit for the health board, but I do not think you can make a wrong decision this evening, so I will leave that difficult decision to you.
All right, thank you for the recommendation. I'm going to open it to public comment on action item A. Do we have any? Public comment on action item A?
Hi, this is Stephanie Lang. I'm one of the applicants for the Board of Health position. I reside at 208 South F Street. And I would really like to thank the commission for considering my application for the Board of Health. Thank you. I just wanted to point out that. I do have a strong background in, in public health as Mr. Cardus has pointed out, we're both. Strong applicants for the position. I have a master's degree in public health, which I think lends an extra sense for population health. And I have the benefit of working at Community Health Partners for the last 12 years. It's the reason I moved to this town for that position. And it's the, the reason that I work there is because of its commitment to the community and the health of the community. We offer programming. And many different aspects for the underserved of our community, so we offer medical care, dental care, behavioral health. Early childhood education, adult education, and I think we have a real grasp of the community needs and. Ways that we can best serve our entire community. So I'd like to, to ask the commission to consider representation of our community's underserved population and their decision-making for this position. Thank you so much. Good luck. I can't make the wrong decision. I agree. Thanks.
Thank you, Stephanie. Do we have any other public comment? Oh, sorry. I'm having issues with my iPad here. I'm sorry. So no other public comment? We will move it to commissioners, commissioner comments. Oh wait, there is someone. Hold on. Uh. Judge Happy, go ahead.
Judge, you need to mute.
Yeah, you're, you're muted, Judge.
Yes, I wasn't commenting on this one. I don't know what happened. I'm, I'm going to be on the next item regarding the storage facility. Sorry, I don't know what happened.
All right, thank you. Any other public comment or sorry, any comments anywhere, any commissioner comments or last public comments? Okay, we'll open it to commissioners. Comments, please? Any commissioners?
Yeah, I'd like to echo. Michael's words. This is an extremely difficult choice. They, both candidates are obviously more than well qualified. At this point, and I've, I've cleared this situation up. In terms of recusing myself from the decision because Dr. Coleman is my doctor. But not. Receiving any benefits from deciding one way or the other. I, it's not necessary for the, to do the recusal. Thank you.
Thanks, Warren. Yeah, I, I also will just state in our small town. Dr. Lang is actually part of our family's doctor. Kind of typical, not my doctor, but my family's doctor. But I also agree that this is a, we couldn't ask for two better qualified candidates. Any other commissioner comments?
I do.
Okay, go ahead, Melissa.
Um, so I was expecting, I guess, a recommendation from the Board of Health because usually our. Boards give us the recommendations and it's my understanding the health board usually gives the county commission recommendations too, so. I think it's a little unusual that we didn't get a recommendation from the board tonight. That said, we still need to make a decision. I do think representation matters and all things being equal between these two candidates, which like everybody has said. They're both obviously more than qualified. And neither one is my doctor. I mean, I've seen him around because I live in Livingston, but they're not my doctors. We already have somebody on from the hospital on the public health board. The chair is actually, she works at the hospital. And I don't think we have anybody from CHP. So in terms of representation, if we're thinking about organizations. I would like to see CHP represented also on our health board, just because I think it's. I think that they probably see overlap in. The community, but I think that they probably also don't see overlap. There's probably segments of each place that don't overlap. So I think we should give serious consider, consideration to somebody from CHP just for more. More fair representation from more places on this board.
Thank you, Melissa.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Quentin.
Yeah, I'll. I'll piggyback on Melissa there too. Dr. Lang brings a. Part, a, a, a part to the board that. That's lacking. One thing being, a lot of the things that the Board of Health has to deal with is the underserved, underprivileged people. In, in our community, of which there are many. And I think she would be a good benefit, especially with the masters in public health. And her background there and, and being on the board. I agree. Having somebody from CHP would make a huge, huge contribution and cover. Basically the, the whole healthcare system in our county. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you, Quentin. Any other commissioners? I just would like to echo also, I feel both candidates are very qualified and I do see. The importance of diversity on the board, at every board and having a diverse representation of all the populations of our community. Not that the hospital doesn't deal with. All populations in one realm or another. But that. Like Quentin and Melissa said, I think that CHP's representation along with hospital is a, and everyone else involved is important. So. Do we, I guess what we need is to make a motion for approval of, of one of the candidates. And then, and a second and then a vote. To have a motion.
Can I make one quick clarification? Just, just so everyone knows, there is a representative from both LHC and CHP on the current health board.
Do you want to clarify?
One of the county members, Ree Hardgraves, is a member of CHP as well, so there's currently both LHC and CHP on the current health board.
Is that individual a doctor?
No, I think she's one of the family specialists, but Dr. Lang can probably clarify exactly what her role is.
Stephanie, do you want to answer that for us?
Sure, Ree is a, is, works with her parents' teachers program. So she is a part of the early childhood education piece. He's not on the medical side, but she's in the, in the education side.
Great, thank you.
This is Laurel Desnick. Ree has been off the board now for well over a year. We do not have a representation from CHP.
My mistake. It's still on the county website, so I thought she was still on.
Thank you. I'm glad. Thank you. I'm glad everyone's getting it clarified. Thank you. Thank you, Laurel. All right, so let's go back to a recommendation by Commissioner. Do we have a recommendation for approval of the member to the City County Health Board?
I make a motion to approve Dr. Lang.
Second.
So we have a motion by Schwartz and a second by Newt. Roll call, please.
Holgland?
Yeah.
Mr. Schwartz?
Four.
Commissioner Freeman?
Four.
Commissioner Maybe?
Four.
Commissioner Newt?
Four.
Motion passes. Welcome to the board, Stephanie. Okay, we're moving on to to discuss the CARES Act funding options. I personally am just going to state it right at the beginning of the conversation before we open it up, that I would, I've been looking at this tonight mostly as information only. We don't have to act if the Commission chooses to act. But there are no recommendations at this time, and I was, I want to state last time I was a little leery just on our timeline, feeling like we're at a crunch, but I also want to make sure we're methodical in our discussions and our product of, and the process of looking at the CARES Act funding. So I don't know if other Commissioners have some conversation or want of conversation in in talking about CARES Act funding tonight. And of course, public is always invited. But my thoughts are, I do not see us moving forward with a a recommendation and a funding of anything as of tonight.
Chair Holgland? Chair Holgland?
Yes, go ahead, Melissa.
Um, so obviously, I'd want, just for clarification, to amend that one part that we already discussed previously. But I just have a couple of things. One is, I was hoping, because I've been getting a lot of calls from constituents about CARES Act funding. I was hoping, I first, I really appreciate this chart, Michael. I think you've simplified the process in a way that's easy to follow with if a person reads charts, but I was hoping you could just do maybe like a brief overview of what it means. That's my first request. And then my second request is Chair Holgland, we talked about wanting to see some numbers for a social worker. So that would be something I would love to see at a future. When it makes, when it comes back to us at the agenda, seeing some of that information, if it's ready to go. Thank you.
And I agree with that, Michael. I know we've talked about it in a number of different times now, and I'm sure you'll give us an update during the City Manager comments.
Certainly, I can give it during the CARES Act as well, if you'd like. It doesn't, wherever you prefer.
It doesn't matter. You choose. Michael, you choose. Do you want to now or not?
Sure. So different models that we've looked at for, including some kind of social worker into the Diamond One First Responder System, we reviewed the current options that are out there. There's a pretty good flow chart, if you like flow charts, of of services that already exist in the community. But the models we've looked at basically are on two different ends of the spectrum, Bozeman and Missoula, because those are both be able to accomplish in the state of Montana. Bozeman does an on-call model, basically where they have a clinical social worker who's on call. So the first responders, whether that's police or ambulance, show up at the scene. They determine whether or not they think they need a social worker. If they do, then they call dispatch, dispatch, then calls the the clinical social worker that they have contracted with, and then if they're available, they show up on that time. That runs Bozeman about $100,000 a year. They also have a a caseworker, case manager on the back end of that, that provides some services afterwards for follow-up services. So that's, and I'm sorry, it's not Bozeman. It's actually Gallatin County that does that. So that's Gallatin.
Stop it.
The Missoula model has more of an on-call team. They have both a a paramedic, I'm in the MT in Missoula, and a clinical social worker on call. They have, I think, two teams, and they both also come with a case manager in the background. So it's technically a three-member team, but only two actually respond, and they will respond with the first responders. So if the police are going to a scene and they think it's necessary, they will respond as a separate unit with those. That runs Missoula about half a million a year for Monday through Friday coverage, I believe, 10 to 8. So they get, I think, 10 hours a day, five days a week for about half a million a year. Based off those two teams of three, two that respond and one that doesn't. So the the range of possible costs is is pretty high, and that's obviously not 24-hour coverage, and it's not seven-day-a-week coverage. So it just depends on how we, those are, those are the ranges for numbers, and until we really get into how we want it to operate, I'm not sure we can narrow it down much more than that. But that's, that's enough to just on the social worker piece of it.
Thank you, Michael. As far as we talked, or there has been some talk about working with other entities. Do you want to address that at this time, or should we?
Sure. In all of those models, none of the social workers actually work for the city. They're all contracted through outside, through outside agencies. In in Gallatin, I think it's a private private practice. Missoula, I'm not sure what it is in Missoula. So almost all of these, in fact, across the country, almost all of them are contracts with outside agencies. They don't actually work for the city. And that is how both agencies in in Montana have accomplished it. We probably don't have a lot of options in Livingston proper, but we have started some conversations with some local providers to see what they could provide, what some cost would be, what they thought the model of service would work best. So we will continue to work through those and and see what we can come up with as a workable solution in Livingston.
Thank you, Michael. I was going to ask Melissa if, oh, there she is. Melissa, is that a good update for now, or would you, do you have any questions?
No, I think we should keep talking about that, though, since there's so much support for that. So thank you for the update. And is it possible for you to walk through the chart? It would be a lot easier than me fielding, you know, 15 calls. I'm doing it one at a time. Thank you.
So, Michael, could you walk through the chart?
Sure. If if that answers those questions, I'll go through. There's two pages. One is more about what we are receiving in revenue and what we have already spent in expenditures. And then the other one is, I think, a philosophical question the Commission's going to have to ask before we move a lot further. And it'll also cover some of the impacts of the losses that the governor came out with as far as what he was pulling back from local municipalities and giving to either enhanced unemployment benefits or direct aid to businesses. So if you look at the CARES Act overarching, it was a federal act. The state of Montana was allotted about 1.25 billion in CARES Act relief funds. The state originally allocated about 300 million to local municipalities, so cities and counties. And then a week and a half ago or so, the governor pulled back about 100 million of that, which he's then putting towards enhanced unemployment and specific businesses for specific help. So it's a little confusing in that it goes over two fiscal years. So when we look at it, just consider that, that we started getting money the last fiscal year here. Let me share my screen a second. Yeah, I'm going to do it so I can just highlight. So you can see these, this block, this 327,000 was actually received in the last fiscal year, and then the rest of it was received in this fiscal year. And when I say it, we're really talking about reimbursements for money we already spent. So the state did not allocate the money to municipalities and counties, as in, they got their money. We're going to give you 300 million and split it up between the counties and the cities and said, here you go, spend this on CARES Act things. What they did was they kept it at a pool at the state, and if we spent money on a CARES Act-related item, then we would fill out a form for reimbursement. And we would send that to the state. And then if they decided it was a qualifying expense, they would then reimburse us that money. So while we did get reimbursed for some items such as laptops, web cameras, some other things, excuse me, just a moment. The vast majority of what we were reimbursed for was first responder salaries. So in our case, fire police and dispatchers, and half of the dispatchers went back to the county because they are 50% funder of dispatch, and the other half stayed with Livingston. So this column shows you the total amount that the city received, or let me rephrase that, that we were projected to receive to include first responder salaries for November to December. The November through December salaries is what the governor pulled back. Those will not be reimbursed. So while we originally expected to get about 2.5 million, the 466,000 here was pulled back by the the state. So total reimbursement is going to be just almost 2.1 million. Again, that's anticipated. We don't know yet. We won't put in our last reimbursement till after the first of the year. And we have not received, I think, payment for our last reimbursement. So assuming that everything goes according to the way the state has laid it out, that's the number that we're looking at. That being said, these are the items that you've already funded. You can see, already made the correction there for the city building down to the 950. It includes, as far as money that goes to first responders back out of this, it includes the body cameras for our, for the LPD. It includes a radio replacement for the LPD and bunker gear for both the active and reserve firefighters. So those, that's some of the money that went directly back to the first responders, since most of it came from their reimbursement from a salary. So funds remaining out as a CARES Act funds are a little over eight, a little over 800,000. So that is the amount of money available that we have already been reimbursed for expenses that the state has verified or CARES Act related. So we don't get the money ahead of time, and they don't like, so there's no way to, the money we receive back goes into the general fund, so it's available for any purchase. We can spend it in any manner we want, and that's what allowed us to do things such as give funding to Parks and Trails, or give funding to the Park County Housing Coalition. Neither one of those were directly CARES Act related for the city. And if we were only able to spend the money on CARES Act-related items, it wouldn't have been able to go to those entities either. But since this was already reimbursed for money we spent that was directly related to CARES Act, the city had much more discretion on where the funding would go at that point. Any questions on that portion of revenue and expenses to this point?
I do not, but any other Commissioners have questions? Okay, so let's just open it. Well, first of all, did anyone have feedback on what I had stated about decisions being made and how tonight, tonight of CARES Act funding, does anyone have any thoughts on what I said?
Yeah, Commissioner, Madam Chair, I agree with you. This should just be like a, kind of like a spitball session. Put some ideas out there, and and I don't, I don't look to make any decisions tonight. Maybe recommendations, but that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Quentin. Any other thoughts before we open it?
Madam Chair, I do have another page of information. If you want to go through all of it before you go to public comment, or we can do it a part of the time, however you want to do it.
Oh, go ahead, Michael. Go ahead.
So while that is what we are projected to receive and what we have spent so far, the real question that will determine the amount of money that is available is how much of a reserve does the city want to carry through FY, into FY22? To try and illustrate that, I have this spreadsheet. You can see the original budget on the left side. And the reserve, the initial reserve was projected at 52%. That was mainly due to the extra money that came in through the CARES Act, CARES Act relief funds in the last fiscal year. But then we also have unbudgeted revenue here, which is the CARES Act funding that we'll receive in this fiscal year. So that gives us an adjusted revenue figure. We have the unanticipated expenditures, which we've already spent, which is here to give you a new capital expenditures, and almost all this fall in the capital range. So there's no additional personnel or operational costs. So right now, if we spent no additional CARES Act funding that we've been reimbursed, our reserve would be at 58.2%. Now, by state law, we can't have more than 50%. So we have to, at least at the very minimum, spend down that 8.2%, which which is what this is meant to indicate. If you desire a 50% reserve, the available funding left is 417,000. That being said, 50% reserve is not our goal as a city. In the strategic plan, the Commission established 33% as a goal. So we could go down as low as 33%. I would not recommend that, just because still in the age of COVID, we don't know what additional expenses we we are going to incur in the next fiscal year. So having some additional reserve for that would probably be wise, but that number is certainly adjustable in a range that the the Commission feels is appropriate. And this, I made it fairly simple on this spreadsheet. So if if the Commission decided on 45% reserve, you would then have 671,000 available to spend. So the Commission has a couple of options before it. It can decide on the reserve at once and then have the amount of money left, or it can decide on what it wants to spend and then see what that reserve, what reserve results from that spending. But either way, it's probably important to 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 understand what the reserve is going to be as we go through this, spending the rest of the money. The initial expenditures that we looked at were based on the entire amount, if we spent the entire amount, which would bring us back down to that original reserve, but that option is completely up to the Commission. So if there are any questions on that, I would be happy to answer. Otherwise, I will let it move on to public comment.
Any Commissioner questions or comments on what Michael just presented? Okay, let's open it to public comment. Any public comment?
Jonathan Hedinger, 519 West Park Street. I just wanted to comment on a couple of different things. One of the items that I wanted to comment on was while the governor's decision to reallocate the money did result in that significant drop off, it's actually wasn't quite as bad for the city as we kind of thought, because when we're looking at the CARES Act funding up to this point, we'd been looking at we, the dispatch funding, the 305,000 hadn't been included. So the, in total, unlike the November, like up to this point, like the November 4th or agenda and agendas like, or November 5th agenda and agendas like that have been saying 200, 2.25 million. So like, just the first responder wage and benefits. And so that 300,000 hadn't been included in the total before. So this 466,000 loss really, it really only results in like the $160,000. So this four hundred and sixty six thousand loss really, it really only results in like the hundred and sixty thousand dollars difference. So while that's, so I'm just wanted to point that out, that we've been planning for two point two five, now we're planning for two point oh nine. So it's not that significantly different. But I did want to comment on a couple of things. I just think, I really think that this money should be used to help people, as I've been, as I've said at multiple meetings. I think that the Bozeman way that they've been doing it really is a good way to look at it, like put out an RFP to people and see what type of projects you can get to help people in the community. I'm sure a lot of great organizations have a lot of really great ideas of how to help people. And having eight hundred and ten thousand dollars at a time like this is really a blessing. That being said, I really do think that the social worker or crisis response team or something like that is also really noteworthy and really great. And I, I just worry, I think up to this point, it's kind of been rushed. And I do think that we should just have a nice conversation about what our priorities are, what our goals are and things like that. Because this money has gone pretty fast. I mean, you've spent, we're all worried about not being able to spend it in time. And now it's kind of getting down to not quite as much as we thought it was going to be. I mean, it's like less than, it's like forty percent of the money or something like that. So it's not like we have for, like, we have to be in a hurry to figure out how to do this. And basically, I just kind of think that we need to be more, just think more critically about what we would like to do with this money. So thank you.
Thanks, Jonathan. Any other public comment?
Yeah, Drell, this is Michael DeChellis. I'm at three fifteen West Butte. I'm also the chair of the Conservation Board. And on the CARES Act funding specifically, I can echo a bit about what Jonathan said. I think that it's a pretty extraordinary time. I have heard how difficult it is for restaurants and bars in our community. And there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of people in this community who provide a lot of jobs, who are having trouble making it and may have a lot of trouble making it before a vaccine arrives. And so I, I would love to see some, you know, sort of some value statements by the commission on how this money should be spent and maybe some consideration of them. The second part of that is, is a specific project. What'll come before the commission soon is the Conservation Board has a update to the Night Sky Protection Act section of the City Code, and part of that is streetlights. And the American Medical Association has come out strongly in favor of certain type of streetlight with a certain temperature of light and a whole bunch of health, public health benefits that come from that. And I think that this is an opportunity to correct some ways that we've been lagging behind in terms of keeping up with that Night Sky Protection Act that was passed in two thousand and seven. I've been working a bit with Shannon Holmes on how to scope a project to replace all of the city-owned streetlights to bring them up to compliance with our current Night Sky Protection Act and the future Night Sky Protection Act, if, if that goes through. And because of the public health benefits and because of the, some of the, I think the real advantageous cost, the advantages and costs that we have from that, as well as, you know, carbon footprint and a bunch of other stuff. It feels like a good expression of values. And I think if we're allocating funds towards our values, that there might be an opportunity to fund that project. So that's a very specific pitch for a project. But either way, I, I'd echo Jonathan that any kind of, any kind of values guidance and solicitation of projects may be helpful for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Any other public comment?
Hello, my name is Carrie Kehl. I live at seven oh two East Lewis Street here in Livingston. Just a quick comment or two. I agree with Jonathan and what Michael just said about really taking our time and, and looking into how to spend this money. I feel like initially when this came to the forefront and a lot of the meetings that I've attended, it seemed as though we were told that this money had to be set, spent in a specific amount of time or we would lose it. That didn't seem like the case now with the presentation that Mr. Cardos gave us this evening, talking about being able to keep some of that money into reserve. So just, I guess, thank you for that clarification. And maybe we all need to take a deep breath and think about that, that we have the ability to take some time to spend this money wisely, particularly in helping people who need it during this time. I would again like to push forward the, the idea of the social worker to work with our police force. And I think that several people have talked about that, as well as many of the commissioners. I would encourage you to do a deep dive into that program, really looking into what we could do with it and what those costs will, would be. So I would really encourage the commission and the city to look at that and maybe dive a little more deeply into that to really assess that out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carrie. One clarification, just from what Carrie had brought up, and I think it's a good point. There are different pots of money that have to be used at different times. And I think sometimes that is confusing. And this whole COVID thing is confusing. So, and then money behind COVID is even more confusing. But there are certain funds that do have to be used before the end of the year. And some of them, like that we're referring to tonight, are, that's not necessary. I just wanted to clarify that. Any other public comment? Oh, Becca, yes, you were in line, Becca. Sorry, go ahead.
No, that's all good. Thanks, Chair Hoagland. Becca Fruck, one twenty five South Eighth Street. I, I, I do understand that this is confusing to follow the whole process, but I'd have to say that I just, you know, publicly want to say I'm troubled by what feels like decisions that were made with funding that without the full picture of, of the budget, those numbers have since, you know, numbers have shifted since allocations happened, including, you know, the, the purchase of the building. And it's, you know, it's hard to understand how we were able to move so quickly without having kind of the, the, the full, the full budget in place. It's, I guess that's what's really, the transparency piece of that and accountability piece is tough. And maybe there's some clarity around that. It's, I'll say the conversation we just had and the chart that was just shared and the discussion on reserves seems like something that should have happened at the beginning of this process rather, rather than now. And maybe I, that's just my, maybe I don't have a full grasp of all this. And I know a lot of us are, are newer to the to understanding how, how funds are allocated. But it, it does feel, again, that other cities, that their approaches, they've been able to center direct services and the needs of the community in crisis in a way that's admirable. And I'm confused as to why we weren't able to do that. Have a similar approach. And I know that we have some funds left where we can make those value statements that Jonathan and others have advocated for. But as to how we got to the place that we're in now, where a very good chunk of the money was spent without even understanding the total amount we had and without having a strategy as to how that applies with a community that is hurting and suffering and so many folks who are in need. All of that is, is troubling to me as a citizen. And so I, I just want to offer that. And I know we're not making any decisions tonight. And I appreciate that we have more time, but yes, I think that's all I have to say about it.
Thank you, Becca. Next is Michelle.
Thanks, Chair Hoagland. Michelle Ubaraga, seven eleven Lockleven Drive. I'll be real quick. I just want to echo a lot of what I've heard already and agree that I think that our many business owners, many individuals in our community are hurting. And I really like the idea of centering how we spend the remainder of the CARES Act funding around our values and how our community has been impacted by COVID and how we want to allocate those funds to best help our community. So, thank you so much.
Thanks, Michelle. And I think we have someone else waiting. Hold on. Joan, go ahead.
My name is Joan Cressidge, four ten South Sixth Street. I'll be very brief. I think with what is left, it will be so, so important to look at who is suffering. The, the conditions that the virus created are, are just really stunning in terms of the amount of people who have been hurt. How can we help the greatest number of people? How can we do that in a way that reaches out and has a ripple effect? And so I, I hope there'll be some really, really, really deep thinking about who is hurting. And I'm quite curious about data collection for people who have permanently lost a job, businesses that are hanging by a thread. We say we love our small businesses. Some of this money could definitely keep people from going under permanently. So I hope we'll look at the well-being of individuals, small businesses, and the community at a whole, as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Hey, and let's see. I don't see anyone else on the list. Okay, go ahead, Patricia.
Am I, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
First of all, I want to thank all the previous speakers, because I, I live and work with the people who are suffering. And it just amazes me that somehow the city has, doesn't see them. And, and, and I would like to see if there's any way tonight that the commission could direct the staff to create a mechanism to do just what the people have asked the commission to do tonight, which is to get public input on projects that they think would be helpful. I, I think many of them are just so important. So many people in this town have lost their jobs. So many families cannot feed themselves. And, and some of them live in the building I, I have. So I, I have great empathy. The social worker is so important to our police force at this point in, in history. So is there any way at all that, having heard the comments of these very sharp people, that the commission could come up with a mechanism for, number one, creating a mechanism so that the input could be, come into the city fairly rapidly and then plan to choose and then to implement. So designating this money, creating a mechanism and planning the means by which we actually implement it rather than talk about it. I'd love to see the commission take a serious look at that, if they would. Because that's COVID money is, by the way, I want to mention too, the flu epidemic of nineteen eighteen wasn't over even in nineteen twenty. It's two more years we're looking at this. We're two more years where these families are suffering. This is the time to plan for this money in the very real world of the people of this town. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. Okay, I don't see anyone else in the chat. Is there any last public comment?
I'm gonna start for the city court judge, if that's okay, Chair Hoagland.
Is it related to the CARES Act?
It absolutely is, yeah.
Oh, okay.
So one of the things that you will see in my department update next time is some information about records retention and what we can do locally for that. One of the issues that we have is we have a number of records in the records retention schedule, which is about a hundred and twenty five pages long that require us to keep some records permanently. One of those sets of records that we have to keep permanently are court records, city court records. And I would like Judge Hoppy to be able to talk about how those records are now being kept and what her needs are. Because one of the things on our list is the storage facility on Star Road that we had talked about using for records. Judge, all you need to do is unmute to be able to talk.
There we go. Okay, can everyone hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, Judge Hoppy.
Good evening, city commissioners, Mr. Cardos and Councilor Allen. And Courtney and I met earlier today with my clerk. And early, several years ago, when I first started, we did have a conversation regarding the Star Edition facility out there regarding storage for me. And we were on the road to getting it set up. And I understand there was a flood there. And it compromised us moving over there. Currently, we have many boxes in my office. I'm, now I have four filing cabinets in my judge chambers. It's getting hard to walk around in there. We have, the retention is unbelievable. What we have to do is required by the Supreme Court. A lot of this stuff is over at the Shane Center. It, it's supposed to be completely locked up with no access except by our court system. When my clerk gets requests from other jurisdictions regarding going and finding out stuff that happened many years ago, which you wouldn't believe how much time she spends doing that. It takes her away from her job, you know, with me going over there to find these things. I am kind of put, kind of putting a request in to have recommendation that we get a decent storage facility for the records for the court, city court system. And that, I, I know that on page one fifty seven of last month's agenda that Courtney showed me that that kind of was on there and there was some funding available or allocated for that. And I just want to put a request that it's, it's needed really soon, because we're getting to a point where it's getting way out of hand. And I just kind of wanted to throw my hat in the ring with that, so that, you know, I could be, you know, considerate for getting the storage that we need for the city court system. And that's about all I have to say about that.
Thank you.
And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. I see Sarah. Sarah, go ahead.
Hi, good evening. Sarah Stans on two one seven Southeast Street. I'll just, I'll just keep it really brief. I think I just had a couple of questions. And some of the discussions of attending previous meetings, we've, or I've heard people talk about a coalition or a task force to think about CARES Act funding and what could be done with that potential. I guess my question is, you know, what kind of outreach has happened with local NGOs or other stakeholders who might be more on the front lines of socioeconomic issues as a result of CARES? So what kind of communication has happened? And then maybe you have so many concerned citizens, you know, with fifty people in the group that are, I'm thinking about these things all the time. And some of us working in nonprofits, sorry, what's the outreach to local nonprofits? I apologize. That's a, that's an international NGO term, which just means nonprofits. How can, how can we help facilitate some of the information that the commission might need or that city staff might need in order to make those decisions? Because I know we have a lot of ideas, but maybe nothing that's absolutely concrete, except for, you know, I definitely advocate for the social worker on the police force and some of the other ideas that have come to fruition that, that would directly advocate for support for some of our community members that are suffering the most or impacted the most. And, you know, what is the type of data that, that would be valuable in making these decisions? that, that would be valuable in making these decisions in such a short time? I do think that we're kind of bouncing around a lot because we don't have that value statement or where we want to silo those funds directly. So, yeah, what kind of outreach has been happening, the communications that's happened, and how can we help? Thanks.
Thank you, Sarah. Looking, I don't see anyone else in the chat. Is there anyone else waiting for a public comment?
Hi, yes. Um, my name is Amy Zanoni. I live at 126 South Eighth Street. I just wanted to echo a lot of what's been said. And to remind everybody that, you know, between May and October of this year, eight million people in the United States have fallen into poverty. And as we all know, some of those people are in our community. And so whether it's through support for a social worker or which I agree with, or in some of the other ways that people have suggested, I think it's important to make sure that this money goes towards the people that need it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Amy. Any other public comment? All right, we'll close the public comment. Thank you to the community for a lot of interesting feedback. And I like when people show up and voice their opinions. So, thank you. Let's move on to commissioners. Do we see anything else tonight to discuss in relationship to the CARES Act funding?
Uh, Chair Holgland, I'd like
Go ahead, Warren.
I was wondering, um, in researching the social worker program, is, are there any places, cities or smaller that offer, or that have the police department with enhanced training for at least several individuals for that type, negotiator-type training that would be an option to, or a possible option to having a a true social worker accompanying the police. Thank you.
Thank you, Warren. Do you want that answered or are you more making a statement at this time, Warren?
No, I, I don't need it answered right at this moment. But I'm just curious as to whether that type of model is being used anywhere at this time. Thanks.
Good question. Okay, any other commissioner comments? You know, I do have one statement. I was going to say this during my commissioner comments. But an idea that I have been kind of throwing around in my mind for possible funding and support, in particular to those struggling is in is the, or the role of the city in helping match maybe funds for water and sewer. I haven't heard, I haven't looked into it and I haven't heard about their entities doing this or cities doing that. But Michael, if we could look into some of those options, and I know we've discussed this before, just, you know, you and I in meetings as well as in other meetings, commission meetings with the public. But how do we use that money to focus on supporting needs that are happening because of COVID, such as, you know, loss, not just loss of jobs, which there's, there's money coming in for COVID funding from all, all kinds of different places, going to different entities. And, and it's a kind of big juggling act. But as far as how we as a city can then use some of that funding to help support you know, families. And I think we should look into possibly supporting it through matching with water and sewer. And we haven't discussed that previously. So I'd like to put that down on to the list for at least consideration or conversation at some point and seeing how that is possible. And I have said this in meetings before. I deal with families that have had water turned off for various reasons. And uh and if COVID is one of the reasons because of loss of money, I think we could add that in as our support from the city and from the COVID monies. Just a thought. That's my only comment, I guess, on funding for tonight, otherwise. Anyone else before we finish up?
Yeah, I'd just like to echo what you said. What, and it's there's so many needs out there and such a small amount. It's hard to pick winners and losers, you know? It's, I'd like to, you know, maybe more specifics from people, you know, exactly what organization, how to disperse, if they have any ideas on how to disperse these funds and stuff. Instead of, you know, just generalization, it's, it's so hard. But there's such a great need. I just, just be mindful of that. That it's hard to pick winners and losers and and how, how do we do it? How do we specifically go about it? I don't know at this point, but that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thanks, Quentin. We'll, we'll move on unless the commission wants to continue in conversation about the CARES Act funding. But we can move on to city manager comments.
Um, do I feel right if I popped in here? I had my hand up and maybe you didn't see. Or are we, we definitely over? This is Joan.
Well, Joan, you already had your time.
Okay, thanks.
And I know you didn't use all of it. Do you want to just take your last minute or so? Why don't you just say your last thoughts?
Um, the suggestion has been made that the commission receives suggestions from the public. And I would like to second and third that. And I also want to say that I think that it is definitely possible to figure out a meaningful way to weigh suggestions. And I think the community can help with that part, too. It needs to be structured, but it can definitely happen so that the input is there from the community and everybody's voice is heard. So I would just really hope that we'll be getting an appeal from you asking us, the community, for suggestions.
Thank you, Joan. All right, we will move on now to commissioner comments. Thanks again to the community for all your great thoughts and, and solutions. Michael, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Chair. So, uh, just a couple of things. I'm gonna share my screen again real quick. For those of you that haven't gone out there and checked it out. We have our first air monitors up and running in the city of Livingston. So this is a Purple Air map. If you go to purpleair.com and just click on the map, go to Livingston. There's actually three monitors in town right now. The monitor over here is private. Uh, I think it's on the corner. It's right by Wyman's. Corner, I forget what corner it's on. 10th and Clark, I think. But the two that the city put in, one is an indoor monitor here at the Civic Center. So that actually tests the air quality inside the Civic Center, which will be a nice addition for staff as they try and decide what events to hold inside, especially during wildfire season. Then additionally, while this sensor looks like it's further over in the ball field, it's actually just on the outside of the Civic Center. But we wanted to be able to distinguish between the two. It also is taking continuous readings of air quality down by the Civic Center. So those are up and active. You can look at the charts. There's different filters you can apply. Depends on how dirty you want to get with the air quality information. But those are available to anyone at any time. So if you're a soccer coach or basketball coach or you're a healthcare provider with people that have pulmonary issues or even just if you're a school principal perhaps that wants to know whether or not to send children out for recess. All of these are available to anyone. You can look at where we are currently, where the history is. They're very self-explanatory. It'll give you an explanation of what the, what the AQI measurement actually means. And anyone can set any policy they want off of that information and it will be available online from this point forward. We have two more sensors that we'll try to get up and running in the next couple of months. One's gonna go up in the north side soccer fields. It's gonna be available for people on the north side or higher and higher elevations on the north side. And then the third one is either gonna go here on the city county building or perhaps on the new building closer to Park Street. So maybe we can get some information on the rail yard and/or Park Street and any pollutants that it may, they may be causing in the neighborhood. So that is up there and available. So please check it out. Please use it if you have any questions. Well, this isn't the time of year that you think about air quality issues with inversions and amount of wood that is burned in the area. Sometimes it can be even high wind events. If you go back and look through the last few days, you'll see that during some of the higher wind times, there actually were reductions in air quality. So it's good information. Please get out there and use it. Let people know it's out there. It's something nice that we were able to get up and running. Other than that, I just wish everyone happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, whatever else comes in the next few weeks. I will be gone. I'm taking some vacation time between Christmas and New Year's and we'll make sure that you have who's the acting city manager in those times. But that is all I have.
Thank you, Michael. It's city commissioner comments. Melissa.
Okay, now I'm off mute. Tonight, I'm gonna read into the record an anonymous letter that arrived at my home on November 4th. Dear Ms. News, I'm not going to lie. I actually regret voting for you. Options, however, were limited. And I would rather have you than Peg Graybow any day. It was great having you in the very beginning. You brought a fresh perspective and energy to the commission. Now you have created an element of hostility and negativity. These are my reasons why. One, COVID has been hard on everyone. It is unfortunate. It has impacted your ability to listen and hear or retain what is being said during the commission meetings or any other previous meetings. Two, you have absolutely no consideration for any other person's time on the meetings and obsess about matters that are not affecting Livingston. Clean air shelters? For what? A couple of weeks out of the year? Three, stop trying to make Livingston like every other community that you left. If things were so great there, then why did you leave? If you don't like how things are handled here, move back to California. You are not for Livingston as you claim. What a disappointment. If you look at California, Seattle, or Portland. Four, homeless shelter? You claim it is the city's responsibility to house the homeless population, three to seven people annually. Do your research and certainly think before you speak. It is a disaster of an idea. Look at all of the larger cities that have these programs in place and still have huge transient populations. Many are due to drug use, immigration status, or mental health issues. I'm sure if you go back to LA, you will enjoy seeing how they manage their transient population. They ship them off to areas like the San Joaquin Valley. Dump them off with little to no resources in an already exhausted system. Drive down any road there, you will see thousands of people shipped from LA living in the camps along the freeway, under bridges. Need I remind you of this? Now look around our little community and tell me where the homeless people are living. Where? Where? We don't have a huge homeless population. People were living like this prior to the rent freezes and eviction moratoriums COVID has brought along. I want you to look at the Winter Truce model France enacted. Francis had a winter eviction ban since the 1950s. Guess what? It still doesn't work. People are still homeless. Five, people want to know where you hear your information. You frequently reference, people are saying, this is what we are hearing during meetings. It would be wonderful if you reveal your source of information. In response to how COVID has impacted me, my hearing and my memory, you don't know how the COVID pandemic impacts me and your accusations are unsupported. In response to clean air. I've heard more stories of Montanans suffering from toxic air than I care to repeat. In comparison, community gathering spaces with clean air are a simple and safe option to improve health outcomes. And we devote resources to plenty of other legitimate issues that aren't ear-round, like sweeping streets or plowing snow. In response to California and changing Livingston. I lived in Golita, California for two years while I worked and my spouse was a graduate student, both at UC Santa Barbara. I've never lived in Seattle or Portland. I grew up in rural Nebraska. I have no desire to make Livingston somewhere else. And this whole go back to where you came from ideology is a tired cliche. In response to your thoughts about our homeless neighbors. HRDC has given several presentations sharing accurate data about our community, including to the city commission. It's on the record that your information is wrong. Although I've visited LA and other parts of California, I never saw thousands of homeless people next to every road. I am a formerly homeless person in Livingston. We don't all fit your stereotypes. As far as who talks to me. My sources are the people in Livingston. The number of people that chat me up while I'm living my life is a blessing and would require a personal assistant to track, which clearly I don't have. You know what people don't do? Send anonymous accusatory letters to my home, except for one. You've had more than two years to reach out to me about any issue at all. I'm not responsible for your lack of communication. You are responsible for yourself. It's confusing that you wrote, it would be wonderful if you reveal your source of information in a letter written anonymously. Before this, I considered our relationship mutually respectful. So naturally, witnessing, after witnessing this behavior, I'm concerned for your well-being. I genuinely hope you can get the help and support you need. So I could reveal my source of information as requested since it's very clear to me who sent this letter. And I could share your identity at this meeting. Instead, I want to thank you. You've curated a list of community members who need thoughtful compassion and support. Neighbors who are impacted by this pandemic. Those who are hearing impaired or experiencing memory loss. People who suffer during poor air quality. Families experiencing housing insecurity or homelessness. Neighbors struggling with addiction or struggling with mental illness. And immigrants. This is a good reminder of who to keep in our thoughts as we move through this holiday season of gratitude and giving. This is a good reminder of who to keep in our thoughts as we move through this holiday season of gratitude and giving. Now let me be very clear. You are not welcome in my home in any way. Do not call. Do not come to my house. Do not send me mail. If you want to contact me, send your letters to the city offices or to my commissioner email address. Commissioners, some of you have publicly addressed the spread of misinformation in the past. Thank you. We'd never tell children they need to accept being bullied or mistreated by people spreading misinformation about them. It's reasonable. We expect as much from adults. We all deserve to live in a community where we feel safe. To those of you who still openly and accept me and support me as I am, thank you. I yield.
Thank you, thank you, Melissa. You have a few thoughts tonight that I was going to share on some of what you just addressed. So I really appreciate that. And thanks for standing up, just like we talked about in the past, how many meetings, standing up for what we believe in and what we want to stand for and how people perceive our future or us in the future. Thanks for standing up. So we have next, we have commissioner, maybe. Go ahead.
Well, it's very sorry to hear that someone would send something like that to a person who is doing their best to improve Livingston. But on a grander scale, it seems to be what's happening in, in the entire country. There's too much polarization. People aren't, as Melissa said, if this person had spoken with her earlier, they could have, they could have had a, a conversation and perhaps resolve things. And instead, it was done through an anonymous letter. There's, not in Livingston, I, I, I'm very, at least to my knowledge, there's very little of that happening in, in Livingston. And the rest of the country, it really is. I mean, it's just, no one talks to anyone. If, if you have an opposing view, it's not resolved. You're just wrong. And that solves nothing. Tonight, there were some, oh, forty some people that took the time to watch this meeting and, and put in their ideas, which, which are the other end of the spectrum from somebody sending an anonymous letter. So I'm very sorry to hear that, that happened to you, Melissa. And I hope that it, it is a very rare event. That type of activity, I yield.
Thank you, Warren. Mel.
Well, I want to wish everybody a safe New Year and I thank my beautiful family for the work that they do to keep us going. I value my commission family. And this year will go down in history and it seems like it's taken 10 years to get through it. So I just wish everybody a good holiday and every day is an event and I appreciate the people that, that I work with and have a safe, safe holiday.
Thank you, Quentin.
Um, thank you for putting up with my sporadic involvement over the last month and a half being out of town. Thank you for sharing that with us, Melissa. It's disturbing, say the least, and cowardly to send it anonymously. You and I both talked about that before, anonymous people. And the lack of civility that is, you know, swept across our country at this point in time. And it disturbs me, the lack of, you know, the disinformation that, that spreads around this town like crazy. And it only takes a few to get it going and it's disturbing. It's gotta stop. Every time you turn around, you have to fact check somebody and it's getting tired of it. It's really, really getting old. And I don't have a solution to it, but on a happier note, I'm looking forward to 2021. Brighter, brighter year. We're not out of the woods yet with COVID-19. Vaccines are just starting. It's gonna be a while before somebody like me, perhaps early summer. And a lot of us before we get a vaccine or the chance to get it. On that note, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Quentin. I had a letter too to read and I'm not going to read it tonight. I'll wait. It was sent to the commission. And it was a, it was actually against our Indigenous Peoples' Day and for Columbus Day, and I would like to read it. But I won't because I can't top that or someone else can't top that. But I was also going to bring up a couple of issues as well. I already brought up the water sewer. You know, matching, possible match for struggling families to be considered, but I would like to also, and I had actually mentioned this today about the partisanship of our that, I don't know what to call it anymore because I don't think it's partisanship when you're dealing as a commissioner, because we are not partisan in our roles, but it has been a struggle working through that, through the uh, misinformation. It's like QAnon is live and well here. When you're dealing as a commissioner, that there's conspiracies and, and you'll read letters to the editor that are more about opinion than about balance or working with others or, or middle ground. And I think one of the things I swore to when I ran as a commissioner years ago is that I'd find middle ground. And what I want and what I get are not always the same. And what I really want, it just doesn't exist here because we're a different community than that. I have to find, I have to listen to the other side. And Melissa, thank you. You stated a lot of those frustrations clearly tonight and I appreciate it. But we have to find middle ground and just because someone wants something doesn't mean it's what they're gonna get. Because there's the other half of the community or the other part of the community that won't, that wants something different. And I think this commission works their tails off to find middle ground and to, to try to support multiple entities, multiple groups of people. You know, multiple loves and things we care for. You know, like parks and trails to our firefighters, to our police department too. So enough QAnon in Livingston, enough conspiracies. And it's time to get along. And when I see these two, like groups of people battling because you're not getting what you want, you know, figure it out. We make kids do it at schools. Let's figure it out here. So not just in here, this space, but I mean out in our bigger picture of our community because it's getting old. Every commissioner is feeling it. It's everywhere. It's time. No more letters that are hate like that. And like I said, received another one today. That's different and I'll share that when next commission meeting. But I'm gonna end on a positive note on my shout out for the month. So for you, you that do not know, I do a shout out once a month, second meeting. It's back and I shout out a community member that makes a difference. And needs to be called out for what they're doing well. And the person tonight is Torsten Prowl, who happens to be one of our firefighters as well as a he's a tenant now. I want to make sure he's the captain. Help me if anyone, I can't remember. But one of the amazing things about Torsten is that he is, he's one of those people that finds middle ground and that's why I thought he needed the shout out tonight. He is, he, he's part of the union. He has been the the cut, like the, the lead union rep. He has negotiated contracts. Yet he works well with the city. It's not union against city. It's not, you know, union against commission. He works well with everyone and tries to find that middle ground to get things done for the city, for our community and to keep us safer. He also has a great style, very likable. It's hard to not have a good conversation with him. He volunteers with our community a lot with our kids and volunteering their time in leading and helping lead, volunteering time to do tours with kids. They also participated in in the backpacks for needy families and jacket drives. And the other day, they our safety county, city and fire, fire, city police and fire brought our, my school alone, thirty backpacks with hundred dollar gift cards as just a part of what was in there for needy families. And he is just one of those leaders within our fire department to do those amazing things. So thank you to Torsten and big shout out to him. Plus he's a damn nice guy if you guys get to know him. Other than that, thank you everyone for coming tonight and participating and happy holidays. And please be safe. And I look forward to a live meeting at some point. If we got forty people in, in our chambers, that'd be amazing. So I hope you guys show up when we do get back to live meetings. On that, do I have a motion from the commission for adjournment?
So moved.